Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014 meeting. We have a new employee showing our dog today.
It's Amy Robey.
This is, I'm Amy Robey.
Amy, come out in the center over here if you could.
You're 15 minutes of fame, Amy.
There you go, awesome, thank you.
This is from the Lorraine County Dog Kennel, and it's in page number 36, available today. It's a black lab mix, and we have 26 other dogs down there, so if you have time, come on down and take a look.
Thank you. Is it a male or a female?
This is a female.
Female, she's cute, okay.
And how many dogs do we have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Yep. All right.
Amy's the face of Lorraine County's dog kennel, and I figured she should do the presentation this week because when you come in to adopt a dog, you're gonna see her there, so, thank you, Amy.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. Boy, he really paws.
At 9:45, we'll have a public hearing on the vacation of Russell Street Sheffield Township under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you Commissioner Kayla, I do have a number of personnel issues this morning, potential hires at the Transportation Center, IT, some Commissioners, Golden Acres. I also wish to discuss the crime lab, with regards to staffing there, and some personnel decisions. Also, the ongoing labor negotiations between the United Steelworkers and our E911 employees, if we have time to discuss that. I think we're gonna be a little while as we go through that. So, both of those topics are allowable, all three of them actually are allowable under the sunshine. We'll offer executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meetings, hey, we go into executive session and we talk about those items that I have specified, thank you.
Approve away the reading of the minutes of April 16th?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enterance service agreement with Sugar Ridge Auto and Truck Illyria to provide towing services for the county, effective April 28, 2014 through April 28, 2016, containing a 30-day cancellation clause.
Before I make a motion on this, we have some people joining us today, and we have our facilities director, and there's questions to how the RFQ went out in regards to this. Karen, and we'll let you guys talk. We brought Karen in, she's the one who does this for us.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I think there may be a bit, a little bit of confusion with regards to this issue. I did receive an email from a towing company in Columbia Station questioning me about an impound lot, and that's not what we're doing here. If that's what was relayed to you guys, that was incorrect. What I did do is a quick internet search for towing companies within a five to 10-mile radius of the county downtown, to see, and I contacted all of them, to get pricing for towing out of county lots. Yes, sir?
Contacted who?
Excuse me, Dave?
I'm sorry.
Come up to this microphone here, we'll let you do, is he gonna be, Dave, you gonna lead the charge here for everybody?
Just for me?
Just for you, okay. Well, yeah, come up, introduce yourself, tell us where you live at and who you're affiliated with.
I'm Dave Vaughn, Vaughn Stowing, Southampton Hurst. Again, who did you notify?
What I did, again, was a internet search, five to 10-mile radius of the downtown area here. I did not bring my paperwork with me because I really didn't have time to dig it all out, but I'd be happy to share that with ya.
Yeah, I'd love to see that, and if you went with a five, 10-mile radius, majority of us were five, 10 miles. I wasn't notified, nobody else that we talked to was notified.
Right.
The man you're talking about from Columbia Station, he's too far out, he wasn't notified either.
Right, I mean, like I said, I'll be happy to share that information with ya, I don't have any problem with it at all.
So, you know, if we hadn't have found this out, that this was gonna happen today, how would we have known that you guys are gonna do this?
Well, let me offer a suggestion. I don't know if they can, she can answer that question now, that's, I don't know how you would've known, she doesn't know how you would've known. I wanna put this on hold, we're gonna go back out with a written RFP, it'll be real quick, just a couple paragraphs, it'll be posted on our website. The, normally the way we do this, and this was a quick one because the courts had some urgency with towing, and I'm sorry that some folks weren't called, we're just gonna post it like we usually do, and then they can respond to the posting on our website, and we'll put it out for the next two weeks, and then people can submit quotes.
What kind of emergency towing did you have, what kind of issues?
We had problems with parking over in one of our lots with the juror parking and people coming in in the morning and parking in the lot, and then the jurors can't park, and Judge Munson had talked to me a few weeks ago, we've been working on this for a few weeks, we couldn't really tow because we had no longer had a towing contract with the company, we didn't have the correct postings up. In order to get the correct postings, we have to really be under contract with the company and meet the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Because we were with whites for a long time, I remember.
For quite a while.
Yeah.
My question's gonna be, why do we need a contract? Because all of us tow in this county, we're within the 10-mile radius at the maximum, most of us, we, who does, who makes the call for the tow? Do you do that, does the Sheriff's Department do that?
We'll, we'll make the call for the towing. The reason we wanna be on a contract is I don't wanna spend a lot of time, who got called, who didn't get called, and then another group of people coming in here saying, "I didn't get called, it was my turn."
And whose car went where?
I would prefer that the county has a contract for three years with the towing company so we can identify who we're clearly working with, and I believe that you'll have an opportunity to compete on this contract now, if you didn't get one before, we apologize for that confusion, but you will have an opportunity.
My next question is, you said that there was three bids that you got, who were the other two?
Like I said, I don't, I didn't have an opportunity to get through all my notes, and I don't wanna give you false information.
So I don't mean to be rude, but you knew this was gonna be today.
Yes, yes I did.
You've been a good thing brought that. You know?
I don't normally attend the board meetings.
Yeah.
Generally, when it's submitted, it's, if there's any questions, those are brought earlier, and I did not know that there were any questions. I thought that I had addressed those with the individual from Columbia Station.
It seemed like this come up awful quick, and then the thing that really, really aggravates me, I've been here since 1982, 35 years, something like that, very towing's been here for many, many moons, done lamps, but we see Sugar Ridge, Sugar Ridge, Sugar Ridge, why is this?
We've never had a contract with Sugar Ridge.
Never.
No.
But I mean, his name is on this paper, to enter into agreement with him.
Well, what is now, the, I wanna pause this, I want you to go get those three quotes.
Okay.
Because, you know, I am, he's questioned that, we're gonna demonstrate that we got the three quotes, there may not have been one from you, but I wanna put that to rest. As far as Sugar Ridge, we've never had a contract with Sugar Ridge before, they, the last time we did it was some years ago, and they were not successful at gaining the bid. Now, they have the City of Illyria's contract, that has nothing to do with us, and what the sheriff does with regards to callouts with accidents that occur in the unincorporated areas, that has nothing to do with us either.
Okay, now those vehicles that are towed from here, where are they gonna, where are they gonna be, if they would successfully receive the bid, where would they have to tow those vehicles to?
My understanding on the Sugar Ridge quote was that they were towing them over to, off of Griswold Road where they're taking the...
Ed's Transmission, or?
I guess wherever they're taking Illyria's vehicles.
And they have, they have to have, they have to maintain a 250-car space there for the City of Illyria, and then these compounded on top of it, they're not gonna have room. So then what do you do?
I don't know what their requirements for the City of Illyria are, that's not my issue, my issue's the counties.
Right.
So I can't tell you how they're gonna meet the demands of the City of Illyria, that's their responsibility from Sugar Ridge.
Yeah.
The, my preference when we bid this, and I say a preference because everything needs to be reviewed, is that we have a storage facility that is within the, close to the downtown area. One of the problems we had the last time was call would be towed here, they had to go all the way up to Avon or Avon Lake.
Correct, Avon.
To try to retrieve the vehicle.
We had a lot of complaints about that.
And we had nothing but problems with it, first they were aggravated because they got towed, then they even ag, more aggravated because they gotta drive all the way to the other end of the county to get their vehicle back.
And that's what I never understood, why you entered into an agreement with those guys to take folks' cars all the way to Avon, I thought that was ridiculous.
We bid it out, Dave, we bid.
I understand.
We bid it out.
But I mean, you need to look at that and see, it needs to be reasonable, and that wasn't.
Yeah, but still under bidding.
Yeah, I understand.
Process, we could've got a company out of Cleveland too, could've been the lowest bidder on it, and that's where it would go to, so I mean, it's kind of a, you know, when you put something out for bid.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we hold this then right now?
Yes.
Can you wait till she gets all the information, maybe you can go meet with her and back afterwards or something like that, but we're gonna hold the legislation right now.
Well, no, we're gonna bring her back up to show us that we have...
We are, we are.
We're not gonna stand here through the...
No, we can keep going and then come back to that.
Well, this one, didn't you say you wanted to go out for a written bid?
For two weeks.
I do, but I want Karen to come back, demonstrate the information, she just got this, like, four minutes before the board meeting, I asked her to come in here.
Okay.
So, I just wanna demonstrate that we did, that she did seek quotes, she did have three, I don't remember who they were because I wouldn't have let it go on the agenda without three, at least three quotes, and they were there. And then I'm gonna map out a plan that will give everybody an opportunity to their seeking to be able to give us a quote for this service.
Yeah, because the majority of the people we talked to that are in the same business as we, they're as blind as we were about this thing, nobody knew anything about it. So if there was, if there was three, them being one, at least two, I said, we've talked to the majority of the guys in the towing industry around here, and they, they're like me, they knew nothing about this.
Again, I think Ms. Dave has specified that she called within a five or 10-mile radius, and I don't know where anybody's located at, and we will, this time, and I was gonna map out later, we will put this on our website with what our requirements are, and then we'll give a two-week period for people to bid on it. This is an easy one for us, you know, it's not a lot of money involved, and I wanna be honest with you, it's highly unlikely there's a lot of work involved.
I understand.
This is more a scare tactic than anything else, we don't tow that many vehicles, mainly because people get so irate, they come up here and they start knocking down the doors when somebody's towed.
I see that.
I wish I could tell you this was gonna produce a lot of work, I think we probably towed 30 cars in three years, and that would be a lot.
Yeah.
It cost probably more for the signs than it did for the profit of getting the towed, because the signs have to be provided by the successful bidder.
Jim, what will this go on, up on the website?
It'll be up probably Monday.
Monday, and then at the lorainecounty.us website.
Correct.
All of our bidding, just so everybody's aware of, all of our stuff that goes out for bidding is listed under, if you go to lorainecounty.us website, scroll down to Departments, you'll find Purchasing, hit Purchasing, Purchasing will take you to a page, and then you'll have Public Bids right there, you click on that, and it opens up everything that's out for public bidding and the day it's due.
Okay.
All right, Dave?
How often is that updated?
As they're sent out, sir. Let us go back there, let's finish our agenda while she gets the information, all right, Dave?
Okay.
Unless you wanna stand there for 15, 20 minutes. Madam Clerk?
Under community development or contract precision paving, Inc., Mylan, in the amount of $111,901 for Lincoln Boulevard's street improvement project. Five bids were received on April 9th, as being most responsive, complying with specifications, and will be paid from the capital improvement construction account. Issue notice to proceed on her before April 24th and complete by July 14. Authorized administrator to notify the auditor to release retained information of project.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under job and family advertised proposals for tannup summer youth employment, notice being the journal on April 28th and May 5th, and open at 2:00 PM on May 12th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the clerk courts, approve an enterance lease agreement with Lorraine Civic Center Committee, 611 Broadway Avenue, Lorraine, to House Lorraine County Clerk Court's title office. Space is 2,155 square feet, and it costs $1,700 per month, effective June 1st, 2014 through May 31st, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, and this, I know you guys are familiar with it, just the location for it, putting it out right next to the movie theater, with them taking down that light, the stoplight, I think it's gonna be an issue for people to get in and out of there. I think we should take a look at a different location.
Well, Mr. Navakos, you spent a lot of time on this, I know you sent you guys the information you asked for, Commissioner Kowski and stuff like that, it's fine with me, it puts a business downtown, we're leaving the St. Joe's Center because of the issues there with the heating and the cooling in the building, so I don't have a problem with it's going downtown, it's servicing the northern end population there for them, so that's fine.
And I agree, I mean, getting out of St. Joe's, brought that up in 2011, I thought that was a good idea, just this location, it's nothing against the Palace, just trying to get traffic inside and out, I think it's gonna be difficult for the customers.
Well, someone who knows downtown lot parking on the east side of the street's normally not a problem during the day.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be a problem, I frequent in downtown Broadway there numerous occasions during the day, and it's pretty simple to park, actually, maybe in the evening, like, when there is a movie going on, it might be a little difficult, but...
But they're not there then.
Right.
But it's also getting people down there too.
Maybe they'll stop at the coffee house after they get their title.
And then get a box of candy from Pharaoh's.
Right.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the engineer advertised for bids for Gore Affinage Road Bridge 0087 Replacement, Rochester Township, notice being the chronicle on April 25th and May 2nd, and open at 2:00 PM on May 20th. This will be eighth of a mile north of New London Eastern Road, estimated cost $390,000, 95% provided by Federal Highway Administration through CEAO, and 5% with, from account MVGT Engineer Project Bridge.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enterance lease purchase agreement with Akron Tractor and Equipment and Kansas State Bank for lease purchases of an off-road tractor and architectural reach boom mower for off-road ditch mowing for the county garage in the amount of $101,243, and pay for the ditch maintenance rotary account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve contract modification one in the amount of $64,333 with Bromholt Engineering and Surveying Company, Inc., for the construction, administration, and inspection services on Abbey Road in the Village of Sheffield and City of Illyria. Work is to be completed, all purpose trails, traffic signals, and grading, and completion has been extended to May 30th. ODOT funding is available with 80%, remaining balance will be paid by the Village of Sheffield and City of Illyria.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I'm pleased to inform you, yesterday I was in a conference call with ODOT, FTA, and Amtrak, Norfolk Southern, the A&amp;E firm that we're gonna kick off this afternoon with, that's gonna start the work on the train station, they have 60 days to produce conceptual and cost documents for us moving forward, but the best part that came out of that meeting, and what I'm really pleased about, is that ODOT committed yesterday to a little bit in excess of $500,000 in toll credits to the project.
Wonderful, beautiful.
I don't have the letter in hand, I don't wanna get too premature on this, but I know it's en route. I did ask for $980,000, I think we're getting about $540,000, recognizing that that's 20% match money, so now we have the ability to multiply that exponentially, and pick up, you know, another 2, 2.5 million, 2.8 million dollars to put that together. So, I wanted to let you know the state came with the credits for the match, I asked if there was gonna be another round that we could possibly apply for additional toll credits. Also, I understand that Ms. Davis and Ms. Dennis were successful with the City of Illyria on getting building permits and fees somewhat waived, is that correct, Counselor?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a done deal, we've had some discussions and an indication from the Administration that they're going to recommend the Council that be treated favorably, but it still has to go under consideration with...
Well, the first step has been complete, which was getting the Administration to take the council.
Right, well, we've discussed a game plan that would implement that, and Larry's being very cooperative with us, and we had very good discussions.
I know Mayor Brendon would really like to see the project move forward, so I'm sure she'll do all she can to help us in regards to that.
Recognizing that if we, if Council agrees to that, we can use that as match money, that'll be an in-kind match money, once again, that leverages us on our, that can be used on the 20% end to bring 80%, so for every, you know, every $2 that they waiver in those fees, we bring...
Eight more.
Eight more back here. So, solely but surely, we're collecting enough money to put this project together, and Amtrak has committed 2.9 million, so now we're starting to talk about a real project, real potential. I still wanna get some more match money from, from ODOT on the toll credits, I think that we'll probably have another round on that, but we have to show some work, and, so I'll bring you back more, hopefully, and within the 60 days that the company's agreed to. I also had a conversation with FTA last week, and they're competing regionally for grant They have 90-10 money to work out at the airport, and we've submitted for $1.5 million for the public apron, which is in terrible condition, I don't even think it was installed correctly, it's been sprawling terribly. They have indicated that from our region, they will prioritize our request to Washington for that money. Now, they have to compete, each region competes, but they usually get their top projects as they're letting money into each region. I also talked to our district manager, who I've known for now for well over a decade, and she indicated even if that project isn't selected, she's gonna cobble together enough money over the next two years to do this project. Fortunately, I had to commit to her last week before they submitted.
What did it cost us?
About $120,000 additional. Now, that is cobbling together our $150,000 each year that we usually get, which we have to match, so that match money would've been there. I think we'll be okay, we're gonna have some increased revenue from the farming and things that are going on there, we have been looking at using that for maybe some equipment, but remember, we're gonna be picking up an extra $38,000 a year. So, what I may need from the board is an advance on the match money, but I believe the airport will be able to repay that over some time. It was just too rich of an opportunity to let go by, to bring those dollars here, especially when it's 90-10. And that project must be done sooner or later, and in fact, it's well past being due. I'll let you know, as I know more, we have a tremendous amount of paperwork and things that have to be submitted to them before the grant goes out in May, but they didn't even wanna have a conversation if I would not lock with them, so I hope that pleases you, but we're working hard to bring our dollars back to Lorraine County for the projects here. That said, bringing our dollars back, it's time for the transit talk we have every week. We're getting very close to May 6th, there'll be a mailer going out from the group, there's been a lot of activity with the transit support. I think Bev's here, I wanna give her an opportunity, if you don't mind, to speak a little bit about that.
Good morning, Bev.
Good morning, I'm Bev Beidelman, I'm Chairman of the Transit Committee Levy, and yeah, we're getting excited, May 6th will be here soon, and we're, we worked real hard, we had a fundraiser, a spaghetti fundraiser, and we sorta did that like at the last minute, but we were working to get these mailers put together to send out to people, you know, residents in the county, and encourage them to vote for the transit levy. And on the flyer, we're saying that it's less than a penny per day, and how they figured this out, if you had a house that was valued at $100,000, your extra tax because of this levy would be $2.28 for the year. That's cheaper than a cup of Starbucks coffee, almost cheaper than Circle K coffee, you know, so we feel that's a pretty good deal. And so far, we've gotten resolutions of support from Lorraine Council, Illyria Council, Oberlin Council, and then Harry Williamson from the AFL and the CIO, and we've had great support from our Commissioners, we've had Lori and Ted and Mr. Williams, we're still looking for his support. I know he said that he'll...
Way to check.
He'll do what he can, you know, to help us, so I know he's a man of his word, and he loves the county, and he, you know, he tries to keep things in order, so we appreciate that, so we know that you're going to help us also. And this is so important, to get transportation back for those people that cannot get to work. And I know a lot of us have cars, but they say like 13% of the people in Lorraine County, they don't even have a car. So right now, we're dealing with funds, you know, people that are listening today, if they can support us with funds, Lori Kokowsky, I got that right, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
She's our treasurer, so you can send her the checks, and we just need your help, it's a grassroots effort, we're not getting campaign money from the county, you know, they're supporting it, you know, with their endorsements, but this is the people of Lorraine County trying to make a difference.
Who do they make the check out to?
To the Lorraine County Transit Levy, Issue, Transportation Levy, Issue 11. You know, if you get it that close, I know they'll cash it.
Yeah.
So we're, you know, we really need your support, we're having another meeting on Tuesday at 11 o'clock in the Commissioners' hearing, Room D, so we've been having meetings every Tuesday until Election Day. So Lorraine County, we need you, thank you.
What we need now, we need volunteers to stand at the polling places with some signs to remind people that we need their support, so we're looking for volunteers, if you don't If you don't have the ability to make a small donation in cash and you have some time, we, we do need some volunteers for that to assign to the polling places. It'd be great, we got people that lived in that area that, that wanted to support us and went out and did that. So they contact the Commissioner's Office or they can contact us, my office at three two nine five seven six zero, we'll certainly list those volunteers. Remembering that, we're going to raise about four, a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars, that'll bring back one point seven million dollars of federal dollars every year into Lorain County. We need those dollars to, to continue to try to restore transit to a better state than it is in today. And that one point seven million churns at least three times, so you're talking about five million dollars of economic stimulus within the community, maybe more. And that's only the tip of the iceberg of the money that we're missing in public transportation that's going into other communities rather than Lorain County's community. Also, I was on the phone this morning with Noacka on the Tiger Grant. That grant's going to be huge. I, I did share with them that we're, we're, we're kind of concerned about the local match on those Tiger Funds and the things that have to be done there, but it was my understanding that, you know, they're going to apply that and they're going to use other types of match scenarios for that. So we'll be supporting that Tiger Grant with an understanding that they have to be very creative in how they match that. So they're working real hard at Noacka on that Tiger Grant.
Those were the discussions we were having, Jim Corrigan, so, and I think they also said we'd apply towards toll credits on that project.
Hopefully, I, I don't know if toll credits can actually be used for the planning process, but we'll have to wait, wait and see. I know they can be used for part of a construction project, but I understand because we're applying in a multi-jurisdictional environment, that some other folks still have some match, capital match that they've expended that, that can be used. Doesn't have to be an equal proportionment from each community.
It has to be in total.
Correct. So there may be some capital dollars that are sitting on the shelf that other communities have spent and they have not been able to use as a match yet that may be getting old that they can use towards it. So that's, that's what, what's going to be good about being in this with, with a multi-jurisdictional approach. So we'll see, you know, that, that'll go out in May, we'll be part of it. I don't know where it's going to go, they're asking for a lot of money and they're asking for a reappropriation of funds from other projects that haven't moved forward. That's always a bit challenging when it gets into the debates in the House. So that's my report for this morning, thank you, Commissioners.
Good job, Jim.
Ms. Innes?
I have one issue of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioner's report.
Well, I hope everybody had a beautiful Easter, I know I did, the weather was very cooperative, a great day with family, quality time with brothers, sisters, cousins, nieces, great nieces and nephews, and best of all, my grandchildren, they really make it fun with, we had an Easter egg hunt and I did a lot of cooking, which I, I told everybody I got new kitchen, but I, it's only for decoration, but I actually cooked in it, so. All three of the Commissioners, we attended the Transportation Improvement District Meeting. We have three projects going forward for two thousand and fifteen, Griswold Road, Lear Nagel, and some remaining money, or remaining work on Abbey Road and Sheffield Village. Used to be that we just automatically would get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for these funds, but now it is competitive. We may even actually get five hundred thousand, correct, this year, or for next year, so good job to the Engineers' Office and all the hard work that they put into that. We also all attended the Investment Advisory Committee yesterday, and we are on track to receive one point one to one point two million dollars in interest income this year, which is a far cry from what we used to receive, which is above eight million dollars. So you can see, it's very difficult to make up that type of money, over seven million dollars, and that's why our services are struggling, that's why we're looking for additional money for transit, because we just don't have those funds that we used to have.
Can you explain for a moment, because some people don't, they're going to go, well, what are you doing, you ain't getting the eight million dollars, you know, it...
It's interest income and...
Well, the investment strategy that we're required to use under the Ohio Vice Code is, is very, very restrictive, and it, it basically keeps us in what they consider the safest vehicles, which is, which is the bond market. The yield in the bond markets have been deplorable for quite some time, so even though the stock market, I don't want anybody sitting home going, well, the stock market was up thirty percent last year, you guys still aren't making money. Well, we, we can't be. By law, we have ultra, and I'm going to say ultra, ultra conservative ability to invest the portfolio of the county, and those vehicles that are, that can be used legally, we're maximizing, but they haven't recovered from the Great Recession to a point where they're yielding a lot of interest to the county.
There's no coin gate in Lorain County.
Well, there's no coin gate, but I want the public to understand that they're seeing a robust market out there. Most people listen to the evening news, they hear the stock market's up, the standard impound's up, so well, how come the county still isn't making any interest income, and I don't want them to think bad about what we're doing here.
Yeah, we're, we're on track for one point one, like I said. The best investment we have right now, I think, is the money that we've lent ourselves. We had an opportunity to do that with some funding that is not general fund obligation, it's actually sewer notes that it's guaranteed income, so we were able to borrow against ourselves and pay ourselves interest, which was a, a really good thing, so. I don't believe I have anything else to report, so, yeah, if anybody wants to send me checks at home or at the office for the transit levy, I'm still accepting money.
Slide it down a few.
Send, send it under my door, yeah, Mr. Williams, if you want to send a check down, I made a deposit yesterday, so we're, we're doing well, and I, I want to thank the committee, because if it wasn't for you, it's really nice to have support of, of the community and not just us up here saying we need transit levy money and it's, it's for your community, so.
Let's make sure that you're talking about, not to you, but to the committee, we don't want Brad putting something into the...
Oh, Brad knows I would never do that.
Brad would love for you to do that.
You guys forgot Kaylee, at least give equal time.
Yeah, Kaylee too.
All right, end of my report.
End of your reporting, Mike. About the only thing I have to cover outside of that probably is, we talk a lot about issue eleven of the transit, but we also have issue ten on the ballot this year, which is funding for our county crime lab. I was happy to see in the report from the Sheriff's Department Prosecutor's Office, no wrongdoing on the part of our county crime lab or its director. He does a fine job over there, as we've seen, there's been no lawsuits filed against the evidence that he had reported on in the past in regards to the accuracy coming out of the crime lab. It's backed heavily by law enforcement, this is another tool, again, last year, the public was kind enough to help us with funding our drug task force, this is our tool they need in regards to getting those drugs tested so they can work efficiently in shutting down, especially in regards to all the heroin and meth problems, you saw what just happened in Sheffield Lake last week, million dollar plus house with a new type of meth lab in our area. It's not good for anyone in the county, so I please, please support issue ten, so yes, yes, ten and eleven, thank you, end of my report.
Well, actually, Easter was also my daughter's birthday, she turned fourteen, and I want to give a thank you to the Wasabi Steakhouse in Elyria. I don't know if you've been in there, individual by name Chadman brought her up and had her trying to crack an egg, flipping the egg up and then cracking it. Let's just say that the egg went off the grill and into some water, but very, great time and just want to wish her a happy birthday. Couple interesting things went to, Attorney General Mike DeWine was in on Monday for the heroin issue, talking about different things, and one of the questions he asked was, well, what can his office do? And I get a lot of calls from, you know, people asking me for network connections and individuals who are, they unfortunately have someone who's going detoxing from heroin. There's really not a lot of help on that. So trying to get somebody to help them, especially on the weekend if it comes out, to find the people, I asked the Attorney General to put a website together where all the information could go, kind of like Jobs Ohio for employers to reach out to employees, potential employees, and he's going to work on that, and they're going to work with Robbie's voice in order to make that happen, so. Great meeting, glad to see so many people come out to support that issue. And went to a UAW retirees meeting, I know a lot of people joked with me, a Republican going into a UAW meeting, great event, they were hosting a health seminar there, I got to work with some people on some of their power wheelchairs that they had questions on, so I got back into my engineering days, I saw a couple of invocative chairs that were quite old that they needed help with, and received surprisingly a lot of hugs in there, so. Great group of people and just want to thank them for inviting me. North Ridgsville Chamber of Commerce held a luncheon at the LCC campus in North Ridgsville, great event, good speaker there, and again, thank you for inviting me to that. Lorain County Township Association held their spring banquet, and the President, Patty Echo, did a wonderful job along with her crew, putting that together. Glad to see individuals from the state come up to attend this event. And actually, I think that's about it, other than if you see me out on the baseball field, I'm going to ask, don't talk to me about county issues, I'm going to be coaching baseball again for my son's nine-year-old, nine, ten-year-old team, and on that, I'll be focused on the kids, I got fourteen of them, so I won't be able to talk county issues on the field, but if you share my cell phone, feel free to give me a call. Don, are you going to be coaching?
Not this year.
Not this year? All right, well, I may recruit you to help me.
Karen's back, can we bring Karen back up, and Dave, I guess you again? You were asking questions before, Dave, we'll make you the star of the program today. We were in discussions in regards to the request for quotes that went out and contact from our facilities manager, and she went back to get her paperwork. You said we received at least three quotes?
Actually, I have two quotes.
Two quotes?
Going back in my notes, one of the requirements that the county has is to have the ability to tow out of our parking garage, and because we have a minimum height requirement in there, I think that limits the number of towing companies that can tow for us.
So the third one was the one that couldn't meet the requirements?
Right, right, but I have a quote from Don's, Don's Auto and Truck Service, seventy dollars for the tow, plus three dollars per mile, and this one, no truck available for parking deck. And then Sugar Ridge Auto and Truck, sixty-five dollars for the tow, twelve dollars per day storage, may have a truck that fits in the parking deck. And this was, phone calls were made on February twenty-sixth. Now, I do not have an individual's name that I spoke with at Don's Auto and Truck, that I spoke with Matt at Sugar Ridge.
Who was the third quote that couldn't?
That I do not have, I suspect that it's probably in my notebook, so, in my, tried to speed this up a little bit so I could get back to you guys as soon as I could.
What's the height restriction?
I want to say it's six-four, is that right, Jim?
It's pretty low, you're not going to get a heavy-duty truck up to the garage.
You're not going to get a normal wrecker.
Not six-four, there's no way.
Yeah, if it has lights on it, even if...
How tall are you?
Six foot.
So...
Yeah, we can barely get enough one-fifty up there.
Yeah, if, if it has lights on top of any kind of truck, it's not going up.
So we're going to go off from them, maybe they might have a wrecker that'll fit?
The, I'm just, Chief, I just need information.
The rest of them may have a wrecker that'll fit as well.
The, the, the problem we have is not so much in the parking deck, it's in the lot across the street, but the biggest problem is in the small lot adjacent to the Justice Center that we've given to the courts for grand jury parking and some jury parking. It tends to have people parking that lot, and the judges wanted to be able to tow cars out of there, and we didn't have a contract. We'll go back out, this will be put on, on RFP, the specifications that are necessary, we put in that RFP and you'll be able to submit a quote for that.
Now, everybody knows what the quotes are, so...
That's probably a good thing for us.
Good for us, I guess, a better phrase for us, right?
But I, but I want to, I want to caution again, since you're all here, and that there's not a lot of towing. If, if you're banking on us doing a lot of towing, it's a last extreme measure that we take.
It really doesn't, doesn't matter about the towing, the volume of it, it's the ideal of it, and then go off from them, maybe he has a truck that'll fit. Maybe he has one, maybe Wayne has one. Yeah, if, if there's specific equipment that we need, I don't think it's beyond our means to purchase that if we need it. And you're saying maybe thirty toes, yeah, maybe not, or maybe sixty toes.
Well, I can tell you that there's not going to be sixty toes and...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
On the toes, I can tell you, because I, I have to authorize a tow, and I, I get tired of getting drooled on when, when we tow somebody, so it, 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 I think in the whole three years, well, it's four years we did the last time, again, thirty would be a high number on the amount of toes. And that was another problem we had, we really wanted the lots patrolled, but we didn't have enough volume in the lots to have them patrolled, so it was on a demand service. But we'll go back out, there, there's, we probably could have did a better job on this, we will.
Yeah, and I, I will say that I should have done a better job on it, and it was just my haste of trying to get an issue resolved as quickly as I could.
Because the judges were asking for it.
Yeah.
Because then it came from this board about towing, because we, we like to plague.
Whether the judge were asking or not, we, we didn't do our best work here.
This is true.
And we'll get it back up, and we'll make sure, if you leave your name and number with my assistant, she's in the back of the room, Sandy, please raise your hand back there, we'll make sure you get the website address where the RFP is going to be located at, so you don't have to spend a lot of time hunting it down.
Just curious, what's the deciding factor, is that going to be in there as far as you, we're looking for the cheapest one, is it the tow, is it the number of days that's going to be in the lot, the mileage, I mean, how do you do the calculation on that?
We always go by the least expensive. So then you, you have to include one-day tow, the initial cost of the tow plus one-day storage.
Plus, if there's a mileage fee involved.
Exactly.
If it's ten miles out of here and it's three bucks a mile, that adds thirty bucks to it, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you take all the costs all in.
Right.
Add them all up, and that's going to be what you base your, your final number or selection off of.
I haven't looked at the, the thing, does it actually state that in the bid? Are they going to see that, how you do the calculation?
Generally, when they fill out, we have a request for proposal, and there's a proposal sheet that they would have to fill out for each individual service that they would provide.
I guess the answer is yes, Commissioner.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was spelled out for them. If there's one line on there, then yeah, that's an indication for the total.
Bidding documents are pretty self-explanatory unless there's extras or alternatives that are asked for within that, and then what those would cost.
All right.
Okay.
You guys?
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, come on up. You have to tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'll be happy to do so.
Okay.
May please the board, my name is Peter Traska, I am an attorney from Cleveland for the lady taking minutes, it's T-R-A-S-K-A. I have done a lot of work for records in other parts of Ohio, and I became aware of the, what was going on with the bidding issue here, so I've attended today. I want to get it into the minutes, that I brought with me some public records requests, I'll take them to the Commissioner's Office, and that is all I've got, but I wanted to introduce myself to you decision-makers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else there from the... Madam Clerk? Board correspondent?
Yeah, well, Commissioners are going to present proclamations for workers memorial on April twenty-fifth and Hispanic Leadership Conference on April twenty-sixth, board correspondent.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
And we'll do our public hearing.
Yep. Madam Clerk?
Proposed vacation of Russell Street Sheffield Township starting at northerly right-of-way line of Valeri Avenue extending northerly about two oh four point one feet southerly from the easterly extension of southerly, southerly right-of-way of Gray Street and on Platte of Gaylord subdivision as recorded in volume five, page eighteen of Platte Records. This petition was received on February fourteenth from House Appraisers International Church and received and journalized by the Commissioners Resolution fourteen one fifty-two on March fifth. February twenty-eighth, utility companies were notified on any easement right-aways. March fourth, the engineer reviewed the description and requested vacating an existing thirty-foot wide road, Russell Road, unimproved section, being part of the Gaylord subdivision in original lots one oh three and one oh eight Sheffield Township, and states it does follow and no objections to the vacation. March twelfth, fifteen residents and township trustees were notified of the viewing on April first at eleven, and two were returned undeliverable. It was published in the Journal on March nineteenth and twenty-sixth.
Is anyone wishing to give testimony in regards to the Russell Street vacation? If they are, they must stand and jury would, Innes would swear them in?
Anybody that thinks you might testify? Do you swear or affirm that the statements that you shall give shall be the truth, that you shall answer to God or under penalty of law, per person?
Bill, you are here representing the Engineers' Office, any comments?
No, I just would be...
You know the rules.
Yeah, get up there and introduce yourself, Bill.
You've been here way too long, you know.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, just available to answer questions, we see no reason to object to this and recommend it be approved.
Commissioner Kallo and I attended the viewing, and there was one neighbor from across the street that attended, and she just came to see what was going on, she didn't have any objections, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Anyone representing the township as trustees here? I don't see Tim or Dave or Chad, so, any property owners in favor of this vacation?
Pastor Silva, do you want to come up? Good morning, Pastor Silva.
Introduce yourself and tell us who you're with, what's the rules?
I am Gilbert Silva, pastor at House Appraisers International Church, and we would like to be able to fix up the property and put a parking... like to be able to fix up the property and put a parking lot in there, make the neighborhood look nice. I have a real pet peeve with making sure that we make the neighborhood look really pretty.
Thank you, doing a nice job.
And so our intent is to expand and put a parking and be able to get another access to get out of the parking lot for the sake of the safety of the community.
And I attend church there a lot, and I haven't recently, unfortunately, but they do...
We're praying for you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for that. You, do you guys rent a sheriff's deputy to help people get in and out of the parking lot? So he's very concerned about safety in that area, and I know the parking lot gets very full, expanding and growing in the church because it is a wonderful church, and we even expanded all the way to Oberlin.
That's correct. We opened up an Oberlin campus.
Well, we wouldn't rent a sheriff's deputy, we would use an off-duty assignment.
Well, you know.
Not really for rent.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I don't think they would appreciate us renting them.
Run a cop.
Wow.
And those comments can be filled out and sent to Lori's town.
Thank you, Pastor.
I have no problem with the vacation.
Well, no, we have to, wait a minute.
Okay.
I have to ask anybody opposing the vacation. I have rules I have to follow.
Go ahead.
There's nobody here. Okay, all right then. So now we can close the meeting and then do the resolution. I'd like to close the public hearing in regards to vacation on Russell Street.
I'll second.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Just for the record, I got there a few minutes after you guys left, so.
Right, yeah, it was quick.
The engineer filled me in on it. Yeah, you guys were there, I think, three minutes.
Five minutes, yeah.
Actually, all it takes.
It's all it takes. Like to make a motion to approve the vacation of Russell Street in Sheffield Township.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Teresa, up to you for public comment now?
Yes, public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Introduce yourself and tell us where you're from with your address, please.
Good morning. My name's John Lesher. I'm councilman for Ward 3 in the Village of Grafton. My sole purpose here is just to thank you for the exceptional job that these gentlemen did last week in explaining the Route 57 project going through the village. It dispelled a lot of innuendos and miscommunication. It was, I think we had over 100 people there, and I think you were the lead on that, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. This gentleman, you just did an outstanding job. I think it's Paul Harvey said now the rest of the story, to let you know that I understand last week he had quite a person that was not in favor of the Route 57 project. It's here, it's going, it's up and ready to go. The trees have been knocked down, all the conduits being run. It's a great project for the Village of Grafton. We fully support it.